Zoning hearing board will now come to order. Will the secretary please take role?
Mr. Morris?
Here.
Mr. Walsh?
Here.
Mr. Marx?
Here. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
In accordance with the Pennsylvania State Sunshine Law, this board shall render its decision on each case either at the end of each hearing or within forty-five days of the hearing. If you are to give testimony in a case, please come to the podium, raise your right hand, and wait to be sworn in. State your name and address and proceed with your testimony. Also, anyone giving testimony who does not become a party to the case may obtain a written decision from the zoning officer. I also have two announcements of law. If you are granted a variance or a special exception, you must wait thirty days from the date of our decision to obtain the necessary permits to start work. However, you may obtain a permit sooner by signing a waiver that any work done during that thirty-day period is at your own risk. A favorable decision by this board shall expire twelve months from the date of said authorization in accordance with Section 111 of the zoning ordinance. If you fail to obtain the necessary permits or do not comply with any or all conditions of said authorization, you must seek an extension. Any remarks from the board members?
No.
Can we move on to attestation and verification of postings?
I so attest.
Okay. I believe we're ready for the first case.
Case number one. Scranton Lacawanna Resources Development Corporation seeks a variance to construct a two-family home at 2428 North Main Avenue in R2 Zone.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Joe Ross, 2302 Winfield Avenue, Scranton Lacawanna Resources Development Corporation, 123 Wyoming Avenue, Scranton.
Thank you.
Okay. We're seeking a variance to build the two-unit home residence on 2428 North Main Avenue. SLR DC has rehabbed other properties in the city, most recently one on Wheeler Avenue that we sold last July, and we're currently undergoing a renovation project on North Rebecca Avenue. All the setbacks, everything is included. The unit would include off-street parking, and we're looking for two three-bedroom units, one on ground level and one sub in the rear of the property. I believe plans were previously submitted, but I do have some drawings if you'd like to see them.
I think the plans are part of our package. We have the plans. Mr. Ross is right, they meet all setback requirements, and there's ample parking. So it's really just a variance for the two-unit as opposed to a one-unit.
Is there anyone else here to give testimony on this case? Is there anyone else here to give testimony?
Mr. Chairman, I did get a call from one of the neighbors today. They said they had no problem with the two-family house going up there as long as the parking was accommodated at the property.
Okay.
Can I make a motion when we vote?
I get it.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Marx?
Yes. With a vote of three to zero, it's been approved.
I'm good.
You're good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Case number two. William Frank Rippeau seeks variance to use storage garage for auto sales and auto repair garage at 1507 North Main Avenue CN Zone.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Blake. I'm the attorney for the applicant. Initially, I know Mr. William Rippeau filled out the application in his name. I did want to correct the fact that the property is actually owned by his corporation, Frank Rippeau and Son Auto Body Shop, Inc. Mr. Rippeau is prepared to testify here today to establish that his existing business is on the corner of North Main and Clearview Street, which is licensed for auto sales and auto repair and bodywork. He has acquired this property at issue at 1507 North Main Street through a tax sale. It was vacant at the time he acquired it, and he wishes to establish auto sales and auto repair facility there. And it is zoned in a neighborhood commercial zone, so we do request a variance.
Okay.
I should also note there's a neighbor, Dave Myers, who's here to support the application.
Is your client going to give testimony?
Yes.
Okay. We'll go ahead and get him sworn in. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
William Frank Rippeau, 110 Shelby Circle, Old Forge, Pennsylvania.
Thank you.
(inaudible)
Mr. King, would you mind starting with the explanation since I believe the reason we're here was a letter that was sent out?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Originally, a permit was issued back in December of 2018 for a storage-only pole barn or garage at that location. That's what was applied for, and that's what the permit was issued for. Sometime in the summer, it became obvious that it was being used for, there was cars for sale on the lot, and when inspection was done on the building, it was to be more than just a storage building. So I had issued a notice of violation that's in your packet, and that's why we're here. Either auto sales or auto repair are allowed in that CN Zone.
They're allowed, it just wasn't asked for in the other?
No, they're not allowed.
They're not allowed. Okay.
So is there a reason why it's set up as a used car dealership already when it wasn't allowed?
Before I used the pole barn up, there was an empty lot. I would park cars there.
You gotta turn that mic on, sir.
Before I put the pole barn up, there was an empty lot there, and I had it all excavated to make it level and put a retaining wall around it, and I would park cars there, and I would complete it from work, and I would try to sell cars there because I didn't know it wasn't a car lot there at the time. It was just an empty lot that I purchased. So this guy, Jack Sweeney, came down and told me you need an office there to sell cars. I said, "I have an office in the other building." He said, "No, you can't have it there. It has to be on the existing lot there." So I waited a while, saved my money up, and I started to build a pole barn garage for storage, like he said, and storage of wrecks also. So at the time, there was no office there. I planned on putting the office in the pole barn, but I was gonna lose a lot of space. So I added an addition on, and I put the office outside the pole barn. This is all new to me now. I don't need to know about permits and what I need to do. This is the first building I ever built.
Now... So, do you mind if I ask?
Sure.
Okay. So, Mr. Rippeau, did you hire a licensed general contractor in the city of Scranton to erect the pole barn?
Yes, I did.
And did you rely on guidance from him?
Yes.
Okay. So when Mr. Sweeney told you that you needed an office on that lot in order to sell cars, did he at any time mention that you needed a variance?
No.
Okay. When you were constructing the pole barn, did anyone from the city indicate to you in any way, shape, or form, other than the letter that Mr. King testified to in July of 2019, that you needed a variance?
No.
Okay. And explain to the board what, did you have interactions with zoning or other officials from licensing inspections and permits from the city of Scranton during the course of construction?
Yes.
Okay. And when you were constructing the office to the front of the pole barn building, can you tell the board what interactions you had with the LIP Department, License and Inspections and Permit Department?
Well, they said I needed a new set of plans, because it wasn't on the existing plan for the office.
Did you get those?
Yes.
And what else did they tell you?
They called me up two days later, and they said the plans were approved.
What about accessibility issues for handicapped access?
Well, after the office was built, they came up and told me it's not the right way. You have to put the door over here, and you have to put a handicap ramp in, and you have to put a handicap bathroom in. We did that.
And so, did you have to tear up what you had already done to put in that ramp?
Yes.
Okay. And at that point, during all those interactions, did anyone from that department indicated that you need a variance?
Nothing but a variance.
So the only guidance you had received from the zoning officer at the time was that the office had to be on that same line?
Right.
Okay. Now, this lot and your existing business are both on North Main Avenue, correct?
Correct.
Can you tell the board what other, what are the neighboring properties? What type of, are there businesses there?
Across from Clearview Street is my existing garage, that we've been there for fifty-three years. And across the other street where there's another car lot there, Finest Auto Detailing has a car lot there also.
And is there another car sales business down the block?
Yes.
And what's that called?
Dave's Auto Sales.
And what's adjacent to, what's between Dave's Auto Sales and Finest Auto Details?
Benton Auto Construction.
And what about on the side of North Main Street that your properties are on? What, are there businesses there?
On the right of me?
To the left, if you're facing North Main. Keystone Upholstery?
Keystone Upholstery's there.
Okay.
And the old school is there, Gosh Grand Junior High, they're making apartments in there.
Okay. And you indicated that it was a vacant lot. What was the condition of the sidewalks when you acquired the property?
Tremendous.
And have you put in?
People would be strolling their kids into the street. The sidewalks were terrible.
And have you put in new sidewalks, both on North Main and Clearview?
Correct.
Okay. I have some photographs of the area if the board is interested, but I think you probably have it. Can you identify this photograph, sir?
This is our sign on our existing building. My daughter Nina made.
And what's the last line on that sign?
Used car sales.
And do you have a license from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania to sell cars?
Yes.
Okay. And that's immediately across Clearview Street from the parcel that brings us here tonight, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And do you anticipate if this variance is granted and you're able to do this, would you be able to, would it increase your business?
Absolutely.
Would you create some jobs?
Yes.
So again, what are you asking this board to do?
Just asking for a variance to repair cars and sell cars in that lot, in the garage.
I don't know if you want to hear from Mr. Myers or?
Yeah. Is there anyone else here to give testimony? Please come up. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
Tom Hess, 2305 Granson Road, Clark Summit. My wife and I also have the property at 1442 and 44 Church Avenue in Scranton.
Okay. Thank you.
Our concern with Mr. Rippeau's expansion of his business is the conditions that already exist in that neighborhood. There are cars on Clearview Avenue, excuse me, from his shop, from Main all the way up to Church Avenue. He has basically turned Clearview Avenue, a twenty, twenty-five-foot wide street, into a one-lane road.
You mean there's vehicles on the street?
Yes.
Okay.
There are sometimes weeks, and even have been there months at a time. No tags, no stickers, parts falling off of them. It's almost a blighted situation, and God forbid, emergency vehicles have to come up Clearview. They just can't get up the road. We have a side gate in our yard that's constantly blocked by vehicles. It's just, A, unsafe because of the emergency vehicle situation, B, an eyesore. He says he wants to expand his business. From my opinion, he can't keep up with the business he has now for all the cars that are just sitting there and sitting there. What's going to happen when he expands his business? That's, and plus, it'll expand the noise that comes from a auto-type business.
Okay.
So that is our main concern.
Okay. Thank you.
I gotta say, when I was over there, it is a complete mess over there. I couldn't even find a spot to park to even look at your property. There was cars all over the place.
(inaudible) I appreciate this gentleman's testimony, but I mean, cars parked on public streets, there's no crucial?
It looked like they were all his cars. There were no plates on them. I mean, it wasn't people that was parking there to go into a house or anything.
Cars in the whole place are parked on my car lot. Those, when that place are around the street, if they are in that light.
I couldn't even pull in there to park to look at your place. I couldn't even get in there. Couldn't even move.
You go up there during the school hours, the school bus can't even get up that road. I mean, they have a tough time getting up the road. I've watched it. I've been there. I don't live that far from here. I've seen it. I see it on a daily basis.
I could make some preventions, you know, to do what you, you know, move cars somewhere else.
Well, like he said, there's cars, you have cars on?
Work around it, let's work with you.
I'm just saying, you have cars on that lot that don't have engines in them, that have been sitting there, or doesn't have, there's cars sitting there for more than two or three months at a time. I go by that road every day.
What cars there three months?
This car's been sitting there for a couple of months, yes or no?
Well, they might be my own cars I take parts of.
Well, I'm just saying, they're sitting on your lot. Do you have places to park cars for people to come in and look at them? Do you have off-street parking?
I can't hear you, sir.
Do you have off-street parking?
Yes, there is, on his existing lot, there is an area for sales of his?
Where, where the gates are? Where the gates are? Where is there off-street parking?
For the cars that?
On Clearview, I mean.
For customers to pull in.
For a customer that wants to buy a car, look at a car, where do they park?
They pull up to the garage and find a spot.
Where though? On the street? There's no, you don't know off-street?
Not only on the street. If there's an opening that we have right by the existing lot?
By the alley there, you mean?
By 1503. No, they pull in the lot, by 1503, right in front of the six.
Right in front of Main Avenue.
He has six?
On Clearview.
He has six garage bays there. People can park there while there's no cars going in and out.
They park inside, you mean?
I'm not aware of any police incident report or any other report of any type that says school buses or emergency vehicles cannot get up and down Clearview Street.
Oh, they can't.
They do it every day, sir.
They can't, but you're right, they do it every day, but they have?
And when they grow for it.
They have a tough time doing it, because traffic gets backed up on that corner.
That's why they're experts driving a bus.
And as Mr. Rippeau said, I mean, if you impose some conditions, I mean, as he also mentioned, the pole barn building, he can store vehicles in it. You know, he's more than willing to accommodate any reasonable issue.
Well, I would take it at this point.
But I don't need to get blamed for cars that are parked on Clearview Street with or without tags unless you can demonstrate, you know, through some sort of proof that he either placed them there or told customers to go there.
Well, whether he told a customer to go there or not, if they're his customers, they're ultimately his responsibility for his cars. Plus, you say there's off-street parking. That was the other point I wanted to make. There's numerous times when you drive down Clearview Street to get onto Main, you have to honk the horn to ask a customer who has now had to double-park, leave their door hanging open, to go up and talk to somebody from the shop. They're totally blocking the street.
That's not my fault. They pull in, they're the ones driving the car, not me.
You could say, well, yeah, I'd like to talk to you about your business. Could you not block the street?
I do that.
Was there any parking plan that you got for?
Yeah, I assume there wasn't.
No, there's a site plan, but it doesn't show any, doesn't show any marked parking spaces.
Because you really couldn't tell. I mean, there's just cars everywhere. I mean, you can't really tell what's coming and going.
It looks, when I was there and posted the property last week, it looks the same as it did when we were there in July and issued the notice. And I just have to take offense to the characterization that this happened because he didn't get proper instructions from the city. I met with his employees last, in December of eighteen, when they pulled these permits. They were told then in no uncertain terms that they couldn't sell cars or fix cars there.
Who sold?
And that was the, that was the reason why they requested a permit for a storage-only garage, and they were issued a permit for storage-only, because the uses of sales or repairs are not allowed in that zone.
With whom did you speak, sir?
One of his employees. I don't recall, I don't recall the name. It was a gentleman that was in for the permit.
(inaudible).
But it wasn't the contractor, it was one of his employees.
One of his employees.
(inaudible) interaction on this project?
No.
And with regards to the office?
Tony, do you want to see the permit?
No, absolutely.
With regards to the office, when we were out there in July, he had done work beyond the scope of the permit that he received. We didn't have plans for the office. We just received those plans with this application. So he wasn't told to do something by us, and in the office, he still doesn't have a permit for, because we held off doing everything until he could appear before zoning to see if he could get approval to even sell cars there.
He testified that he did the office, and he didn't realize he needed to amend the plans. He admitted that, and he also indicated that he's been working at, that was his family business since he was a kid, and this is the first time he's done a construction project. And he relied on his contractors. So, again, I mean, Mr. Rippeau is more than willing to abide by any conditions. I mean, there's at least four, what, three or four auto sales within that block.
Yeah.
Just for the record, Mr. King has given the board a copy of the building permit that was taken out. Is there anyone else here to give testimony? Come on up, please. Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Name and address, please.
I got a house up on, my name's Robert Bronson. I got a house up on North Rebecca in one on Clearview at the same time. And the cars that you're talking about that are parked on that road does not only belong to Billy, belongs to a guy that lives up on, or doesn't live up on Church. But he parks his cars there. He's from West Side. So I don't see where Mr. Rippeau should get the whole blame of this car parking, because I can name four cars there now that belongs to this other guy. And, you know, like I knew Billy's father back in the sixties, and they always did everything by the book before. And as far as I, I'm concerned, you know, I have no problem with the Clearview Street. It's just that it, you know, it's a narrow road, and it is tough getting up and down. But you don't have control over your customers. What customers do outside your place is a customer. It's just like owning a bar that's next to Billy. They come out and they cause damages. Can you blame the bar owner? No, you gotta blame the customer. So I mean, when the customers come up the road, they park, the doors are open, well, that's not his problem. He's inside his building. And I mean, I feel that Billy should be held liable for all this. You know, the, as far as the cars on that street. And like the gentleman said before, he's from Clark Summit. He's not there twenty-four hours a day, so he doesn't see what's going on. He doesn't see the other guys dropping cars off. Matter of fact, the house that I'm talking about, no one lives in that house. It's just an empty vacant house. And that's all I gotta say about it, you know. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to give testimony?
Hello, my name is James R. Reesman. I live at two locations.
I gotta swear you in first. Could you please raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
I live at 1417 Clearview Street, and I also own a property at 1520 Church Avenue. And at that Church Avenue property, we use the back alley with a twenty-six-foot straight job, similar to Keystone Upholstery's, and we don't have a problem, my son doesn't have a problem ever pulling out that alley, turning down that cripple's, or going up Clearview Street. You know, and that's shorted in a school bus, so I don't know why there would be a problem with school buses. But the problem I see a few times when I'm coming down with my vehicle to leave is two school buses come at the same time, and they want to swing out and go up the hill. So any double tractor-trailer, two vehicles, as long as my son's twenty-six-foot vehicle that would try to enter, that would have the same kind of problem. You know, if there's, like, for instance, when the school gets busy and it's leaving or coming, they block off the top of the hill, and it sometimes lines up all the way down. You know, there's a lot more problems that goes on there that, it's just the situation of it. There is never complained about a fire truck getting up that hill at any given time with a few fires that was up that way in the past that I could ever remember. I'm fifty-nine years old. I grew up at Clearview Street, 1417, three blocks up from there. And I had my vehicle done three years ago and two years ago, and Bill did it, and there was not no problem parking or nothing like that. And there was never no complaints or nothing that I could see. And what he did there across the street solved that Main Avenue from getting flooded with water by putting a controlled system in there with sidewalks. From when the house was torn down before it was, alls he did is put a nice big stone wall where the garage was, and he put a smaller building up there, and then the four-car garage was there. So I don't understand why everybody's getting upset with it, because it was a commercial use. It was for doctors, and they had cars all over the place across there. And Billy's father and Billy still were able to maintain their? And Billy's father and Billy still were able to maintain their use of that street and never had no complaints. But appears that now somebody's upset with it. And all the people has changed up on Church Avenue that used to live there, because I guess they get older and they pass away, and there's different people that moved in there, and they're also a little disappointed, but what are you gonna do with progress? How can you stop progress? He's just doing it too long to be not doing it. I'm for it all the way.
Okay.
The sidewalks are the best they've ever been. They used to be old slate ones on, uh, Main Ave, but now they're nice concrete, like a lot of them are. That's the best thing that was ever happened there. By living there as long as I have, you would really respect that versus denied or go against it. I have a truck and a trailer that I take up there quite a bit, pulling a backhoe and a bobcat. You know, and I mean, that's a one-ton vehicle, pulling a fourteen-thousand-pound trailer, and I never have a problem getting through there. I'd rather go through there than go down Wood Street, to be honest, and that's a block away, or even go down Theodore Street. It's easier to go down Clearview Street to get out, rather than get out Theodore Street or Wood Street. And with that trailer, that's a twenty-six-foot-long trailer on a twenty-one-foot truck, so that's saying something. That's an eight-foot-six trailer, and there's not a problem in the world getting through there. I've been in business since nineteen seventy-nine, graduated Central High School. And I did six years in the Marine Corps, but it's just nuts what's going on there to stop them. I don't understand why.
Okay? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sir, what would you like to say?
Capital E-A-S-T-M-A-N. Is there anyone else here to give testimony? Can you raise your right hand, please? Do you solemnly swear the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name an address, please.
Uh, David Myers, one hundred North uphill Road, West Abington, PA. Uh, I own the apartment building adjacent to Billy's, uh, car, car lot.
Okay.
And I just wanna say that I don't have any problem at all. My tenants that live there have no problem with parking. Uh, my daughter has a, uh, has a, she's a counselor and has a practice there, and her clients have no problem parking. I might add that, uh, when the city knocked down the existing, uh, structure that was there, the sidewalks were just, they were so bad that people actually were walking on Main Avenue and up on Clearview Street, uh, so they wouldn't, uh, fall. Uh, they were, I know my daughter fell once, uh, on the sidewalk, so... But, uh, other than that, I mean, uh, Billy's been a good friend and, uh, and I do support him. Uh, he's added one-hundred percent. Uh, it looks great, in fact, I painted my building, and, uh, I just wanna say that, uh, that I support, you know, what he's trying to do with the corner. I mean, we have security cameras now, which we didn't have, I know I have four on my building, but he's added numerous, uh, security cameras, which helps with crime, with things that are going on in the neighborhood, but, uh, you know, other than that, I just wanna let you know that, uh, parking has never been a problem, and I've owned that building for like twelve years. And, uh, sometimes you may have, uh, a customer come, leave, double park their car there or leave their car there, but that's, uh, part of the business. Uh, anybody that, I mean, like he said, he's been there for, his dad actually started there fifty-three years ago. And I support anybody that tries to, uh, expand their business and improve their livelihood. So, uh, I just wanna say that, uh, I do support, uh, what Mr. Grippo is trying to do.
Thank you. It sounds like some of the concern is more related to cars on the street and cars that can't park at the property when they're shopping? Is that something that can be addressed? And I would assume we never got a parking plan, car count for this since the application came in?
No.
For a storage building?
I think you see sheet, I think it's SP one in the set of plans, shows the property.
Yeah.
And it, and shows the parking area, it doesn't show any, uh, doesn't show the spaces lined out or-
Right.
Yeah, a, a, a couple of things, uh, Mr. Grippo, on your present property, not this one. Do you repair, do you have a repair garage there?
Yes, sir.
Do you need a second repair garage?
Sure, yes.
You do, you do. Okay, so this would be both sales and repairs going on at this new location?
Yes.
Okay. For the parking, you need to present how many cars will be on that lot at any one time? So that the board can figure out through the ordinance how many off-street par, off-street parking spots you need.
Okay.
As it's related to how many cars you're gonna have to, for sale on that lot.
Right.
Okay? Um, I don't know if the board has any other questions like that.
My thought was, would you like to consider asking for a continuance, working with Mr. King, and coming back next month with a parking plan where, because right now we have-
Yeah, absolutely.
And, okay.
As long as he's not mad at us.
Just need to ask for a continuance.
Um, we would like a continuance to allow us to, uh, work with Mr. King and, uh, and that department to develop more, uh, information for the board's consideration.
And Don, you'll work with them as far as the off-street and try to get some kind of diagram together and... I'd make a motion for the continuance.
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes, on the continuance.
Mr. Morris?
Yes, on the continuance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Call the next case.
Case number three, Advocacy Alliance and Kelco Properties, Inc., seek variance to split a property at eight oh nine Jefferson Avenue into two lots below the minimum lot size and continue the years, use the rear portion as a storage garage, institutional general zone.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you are about to give is the truth-
He's an attorney, he's-
Okay. You can proceed.
Identify yourself for the board.
Joseph O'Brien, uh, attorney, I'm here on behalf of the applicant's Advocacy Alliance and Kelco Properties. Advocacy Alliance is a local company that provides services to, uh, people with intellectual disabilities. Kelco Properties is also a local company that develops personal care homes and nursing homes. The property involved is eight oh nine Jefferson Avenue in the city of Scranton. It's owned by Kelco and it's being sold to Advocacy Alliance, at least the front part of it is. Uh, the, a little background, eight oh nine Jefferson Avenue, as you may know, was at one time a residential neighborhood. There were homes there, probably built seventy-five to a hundred years ago, most of them. In the last twenty-five or thirty years, the area's really changed. The, uh, there are three large lots on that block now. One is one of the large Mercy parking garages. Another one is a personal care home, four or five stories. And another one is an outdoor, uh, parking lot, I say the Mercy, a community hospital. Uh, there, there are also fourteen other lots on that street. They're all about the same size as this, they're a hundred and fifty feet deep and maybe forty, fifty, or sixty feet wide. All of those, uh, lots would be, uh, undersized, uh, under the present ordinance, which requires a ten thousand square feet. The, uh, Advocacy Alliance owns, I think, eight of the lots, and they have, uh, they bought homes, I believe three of which were condemned when they bought them, and have rehabilitated them, and now they have, uh, offices from which they perform their mission of service to those with intellectual disabilities. Uh, the, uh, uh, neighborhood is exceptionally well-maintained. The, uh, uh, lawns are well-kept, the sidewalks are free of debris, free of ice and snow at all times. The homes have been, uh, refurbished into office buildings, and, uh, everything is first-rate and kept in an outstanding condition. The property at eight oh nine Jefferson is located between an outdoor lot, outdoor parking lot for the, uh, for the, uh, community health and, and a personal care home, a large personal care home. Advocacy Alliance, it's owned by Kelco. Advocacy Alliance proposes to, uh, purchase that and then divide it into two lots. Advocacy is purchasing the front lot, Kelco will remain the old lot. Uh, the variance is needed because the, the two surviving lots will be three thousand each. It's now six thousand. Uh, the, uh, uh, the use, Advocacy Alliance, it, the, the residential, uh, the structure that appears to be a residential home, it isn't being used. Advocacy's gonna buy that, refurbish it, and put, uh, workers in there, office space, office workers. The back lot is used by Kelco, which is a company that develops nursing homes and, uh, personal care homes. They use it for storage and they'll continue to use it for storage. That's what, uh, the plans are for the building. We're here for variance, we have to go to planning after this, uh, uh, to divide the lot. We're just here for a variance, that's the lot size. I have with me tonight, I have Mr. Alex Hazuri, who's the president of, uh, Advocacy Alliance, and he can answer any questions you might have about that company, their plans for the lot, and how they've maintained, uh, the rest of the street, which I feel is, they've maintained it very well. We also have Bob Mandola, well-known surveyor in the area, who's done the plot plan, uh, and all the surveying work that is necessary, and I handed you a copy of his report. Uh, if anybody has any questions for me, be happy to answer them. Questions for Mr. Hazuri or Mr. Mandola, they'll be happy to come to the podium and answer them also.
Uh, my initial question's actually gonna go over to Don. Do we require parking for this, depending on the use of the remaining building?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. Advocacy Alliance has a parking lot, and they have other office space in that block, and they have a parking lot, the, the next block down?
Right. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name an address, please.
Alex J. Hazuri, nine one nine Electric Street, Scranton.
Thank you, sir.
To address the parking, the Advocacy Alliance owns, uh, seven buildings which front Jefferson Avenue. Six are on the odd side of Jefferson where this building is. One is on the even side on the corner of Jefferson and Myrtle, and one is one behind that on, uh, seven sixteen Myrtle Street. We have, uh, six parking lots in the rear of each building on Jefferson Avenue, which give us about fifty, forty-five to fifty lots. We also have a garage there where we park three cars. We also own a lot on the corner of Jefferson and Myrtle where we park fourteen cars, and we did receive a variance from, from you gentlemen and, and lady at the time, uh, to put another parking lot on the corner of Madison and Myrtle. And we requested and received an extension because we're, we're renovating our buildings and we're gonna hope to put another parking lot on the corner of Madison and Myrtle, which will give us, uh, well, well into about ninety parking spaces that service about maybe eighty staff that work, maybe eighty-five staff that work on tho, in those buildings. And we also have an arrangement with the Mercy, the, the, the company that owns the parking garage for the Mercy Hospital, where our folks can park there, and some of them choose to, and they park for, we purchase a, a pass for them to park for twenty dollars per month in that garage.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, if this variance is granted, are there gonna be any physical changes on the ground?
To the ground? No, we, we hope to get nine offices from, from within that building.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here to give testimony? Okay.
And the, the variance needed, and correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, is for the minimum lot size, because it's, the, the buildings are existing, so they're not changing any setbacks as such.
Right.
Uh, it's really, 'cause in the, in the, uh, institutional G, you're supposed to have ten thousand square feet per lot. The lot itself only has six thousand to start with.
Right.
They're asking for a relief to put two, three thousand square foot, uh, lots. Correct?
That's correct, yeah. The other, the setbacks and things, as you pointed out, Dan, uh, are existing for seventy-five years. They're, uh, grandfathered in and, uh, way before the zoning ordinance.
Right, right. That, that's why the question to Alex as to whether they were changing the footprint of the building, and he said no.
Okay, I'd make a motion to vote.
Second.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Morris?
Yes. With a vote of three to zero, it's been approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll call the next case.
Case number four, Birdhouse Outdoor Appeals Denial of Permit or in the alternative seeks a variance to construct an off-premise sign at five four one Wyoming Avenue, a light industrial zone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Matt Barrett here on behalf of Birdhouse Outdoor. I also have Ryan Adcroft, the principal with Birdhouse. We can have Mr. Adcroft sworn in if you like.
Ryan Adcroft, eight oh one Electric Street, Scranton, PA.
Okay.
Have him sworn in first.
Yeah, I'll have you swear in first, Ryan. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Name an address, please.
Ryan Adcroft, eight oh one Electric Street, Scranton, PA.
Thank you.
Sure. A-D-C-R-O-F-T.
Good evening, um, my name is Matt Barrett. As a preliminary matter, I know that the first issue is an appeal of the zoning officer, so I'm not sure how you wanna do that first, Dan?
Yeah, why don't you go first, Dan?
Uh, a permit was received on January seventh to put an off-premise sign or a billboard at the rear of five forty-one Wyoming Avenue. I denied the permit under section seven twelve F point four of our zoning ordinance that states any off-premise sign shall be separated by a minimum of four hundred feet from any other off-premise sign that faces on the same side of the same street. Uh, an, an existing off-premise sign is located two hundred and fifty-six feet from the proposed location, both facing Olive Street. location, both facing Olive Street. That was the purpose of the denial of the permit.
May I ask the zoning officer questions?
You may.
Mr. King, with regards to the sign, the Lamar sign, did you make a determination as to what street that faces?
I was able to stand at the location where the proposed sign is and view it in plain view, so I could see it from Olive Street.
Understanding, the ordinance says faces as opposed to visible from. And so with regards to the ordinance itself, where it says that it faces a street, were you able to make a determination as to what, from your perspective, what street it faces?
I believe it faces both Penn Avenue and Olive Street.
Now, the ordinance doesn't say streets, it just simply says faces street. And so, did you interpret that to be multiple streets or only one street?
I interpreted to mean any street that the sign faces.
And with regards to it appearing on the same side of the same street, what street were you referencing with regards to that particular language of the, of the, of the ordinance?
Olive Street.
So, with regards to this issue, I'd be happy to hand up some material with regards to interpretation of ordinances, and I'm sure Mr. Penatar will correct me if I'm wrong. But the, when interpreting ordinances, they have to be interpreted as they're written. And this particular ordinance makes clear that you have to make a determination as to the sign faces a street. So it's got to face the same street and be on the same side. In this particular instance, the sign, the Lamar sign, clearly faces Penn Avenue. It's, and clearly faces a direction of east. Right? You don't look behind the sign. You look, I'm facing towards you, I'm not facing to the rear of me. So the sign faces to the east. The proposed sign faces to the west. Do you have, do you have access to the proposed sign in the back of the, of the Meals on Wheels building?
Yes, so if you look at the back of the Meals on Wheels building...
The proposed sign would go on the rear of the Meals on Wheels building. And so that sign would face towards West Mountain. The Lamar sign faces east. And so with regards to this particular ordinance, you have to make that determination as to which way does the sign face. Not only that, the ordinance makes clear, you have to make a determination as to what street, as opposed to streets. The ordinance is not written in such a way that says visible from, or any other language. It clearly says faces the same side of the same street. These signs do not face in the same direction. And in fact, they don't face the same street. They're not on the same side of the same street. They clearly are on Penn Avenue. That would be the side of Penn Avenue. And this one would arguably be on the side of Oakford Court. It's certainly not on the same side of Penn Avenue, and it's certainly not on the same side of the street. So you'd have to make that determination. And when interpreting ordinances, the municipal planning code makes very clear that under 603, "In interpreting language of a zoning ordinance, to determine the extent of the restriction upon the use of the property, the language shall be interpreted where doubt exists as to the intended meaning of the language written and enacted by the governing body in favor of the property owner and against any implied extension or restriction." In the case law, and this is also very clear, that while you are free to interpret ordinances, you are bound by the written language, and you can't just interject what you believe it should mean, or how, what it should say. Rather, you have to apply the ordinance as it is written. In this instance, this ordinance is very specific. You have to make a determination as to which way it faces. These clearly face in opposite directions. What street? This is not on the side of the building facing Olive Street, the proposed use. It's on the backside, it faces Oakford Court. And the other sign clearly is on the side of Penn Avenue. So you don't have the same street, and you don't have on the same side. So the problems would be facing, street, and same side. And so with that, I mean, I don't know how you want to do that from an interpretation standpoint. Certainly, if we need to develop the record, I think the application's been submitted. I can have Mr. Adcroft confirm his relationship to the property owner, if you like.
I guess I'm confused a little bit. So if you're coming from Wyoming Avenue, you're going down Olive? Where, where are we?
If you're going down, yeah. I can clarify that for you.
I'll hand the board some photos, show Mr. Penatar some photos as well.
This'll be standing.
So you can see the Lamar building?
This is Lamar?
That's Lamar.
Down ahead of you.
That's why I said it faces on Olive Street too.
So if you were coming down Olive Street, going in a westerly direction towards the underpass or overpass, depending on how you refer to it, headed towards Scranton High, that billboard faces the easterly direction. Likewise, the inversion of that would be that the proposed building faces west. And so, I don't know if that provides clarity to you, Dan?
Okay, so in order to see the Lamar sign, I've got to be going down the hill. In order to see the proposed sign, I've got to be coming up the hill? Is that what you're?
Yes.
That's what you're telling me?
Well, I'm not always saying, the ordinance doesn't say from the eye of the traveler, it says faces, right? And clearly...
No, it doesn't really say faces. It says faces onto. That, that gives it a little more leeway. I mean, but let's, let's go beyond that.
Okay, then you got to get to the, go ahead.
If, if I'm coming down Olive Street, I can't see this new sign?
If you're coming down Olive Street, I don't want to misstate it. In theory, if you were driving down Olive Street and you craned or turned your neck as hard as you could, you could theoretically see the sign. But that would not be the intent of the sign, it would not be the intention of the ordinance, I don't think. The ordinance would be, for the direction of travel, you're correct, coming down Olive Street, the only sign that would be in your field of vision without a real effort to see another sign would be the Lamar sign at the bottom of the hill. And likewise, if you were coming up, if you were coming up Olive Street, you couldn't see that sign at all, because it wouldn't be in your periphery until you got beyond it. You'd have to look in the rearview mirror, because the, it's at a corner, the way it's situated. So in that circumstance, you would not see the Lamar sign coming up Olive Street.
Okay. I understand that.
And I think on the, the reading of the ordinance under that, that section of the municipal planning code, you know, they have to be strictly construed, and, you know, any benefit, any doubt has to be construed in favor of the property owner, and this is the applicant in privy with the property owner.
Mr. McDonough?
Sean McDonough, Sean McDonough on behalf of Lamar. I understand Attorney Barrett's argument, but the interpretation that's been offered by Mr. King of this particular provision is correct. First of all, there's a prior decision by this board within the last couple of years, where precisely the same argument was made by Mr. Joe Gahouli on behalf of the development...
Sean, I'm sorry to do, I don't want to cut you off, I didn't know how far we were going to go. I do object to Lamar's standing, I've raised this objection in the past. I think under the zoning ordinances, a business like Lamar would have to show that they would actually sustain substantial harm as a result of this billboard. I've previously presented evidence regarding Lamar's standing, an entity that is multinational with three thousand six hundred employees, with one point nine billion dollars, or one point eight billion dollars in revenue last year. I don't think under the zoning ordinance, they have standing to take a position with regards to this matter. So I'm sorry to interrupt you, Sean, thank you.
Oh, no, that's fine.
The zoning board has the authority to determine who has standing, so we'll leave that up to them.
I understand Attorney Barrett's argument...
We're going to allow it.
And one of the last things that he said was that the interpretation of this particular provision is not a function of the vantage point of the person looking at the sign, that it's a strict interpretation based upon the precise language that is set forth in Section And clearly, when you look at his, I don't know if he's marked these for the record, but the photograph that he has with the colored board as one comes down Olive Street, that is a board owned by Lamar, which faces on to Olive Street. The board that Birdhouse is proposing this evening is a board that faces on to Olive Street. And in addition to that, the language, when, if you adopt a strict interpretation of the, of the language of the section, they're even on the same side of the street. They face the same side of the street within a one-block radius. So that if, if we were to accept Attorney Barrett's interpretation of this particular provision, you would be able to come in and put up a billboard in the three hundred block of Olive Street, and then go five or ten or twenty feet down the road and put up another one, only if it's looking in the opposite direction, or if it's viewed in the opposite direction. The, the purpose of this provision is, and I would suggest to you that when, when you do interpret it, and Attorney Barrett's spoken about statutory construction, that the introduction to the off-premise sign section, and Section A talks about congestion and the reality of urban blight. If Attorney Barrett's interpretation were to be adopted by this board, you would have no way to prevent, in this particular district, multiple billboards within a single-city block, as long as they were facing in opposite directions. That's the argument. I mean, the Lamar board clearly is on Olive Street, within a couple of hundred feet. Mr. King, I would submit to the board, has been doing this a long, long time. He's an expert. He was there from the beginning of the development of the ordinance, and recognizes that two boards within two hundred feet of each other is clearly not contemplated by this provision. Thank you.
Let me be clear, I was not suggesting that Lamar's billboards constitute urban blight. If that's the impression I was giving, I'm sorry to Lamar. I know they have a very respectable business, multinational, and I'm not suggesting that their billboards constitute urban blight. With regards to Mr. King, Mr. King was asked to make a determination and then make a, make a decision, and that appeal is taken to this board. Under the ordinance, certainly Mr. King could have called in Mr. Penatar, and Mr. Penatar is here today as a solicitor as well. And I think you have to really look at, you can't face in the same direction twice. I mean, you can't face in two different directions, really. You have to go by which direction does this face? And these clearly face in different directions. I mean, they're facing you or I'm not facing you.
So we're going to make a decision on, on your ruling, Mr. King? Is that what, is that what we're going to do?
Yeah, I mean, when you look at the, the ordinance says that the sign faces the same side of the same street. So the interpretation is, does, do these two signs face the same side of the same That's the interpretation you guys have to make.
So how, how are we going to vote?
We always get confused when we say we're going to approve or disapprove Mr. King's decision. So I'd rather you guys decide whether, specifically state whether you feel that these two signs face the same side of the same street.
The street being?
Olive.
Are they, are they making a determination as to what street?
Same side of the same street.
Is that Olive Street?
It's the only street there, other than Penn Avenue, but it's not, that's...
My concern is Penn.
Yes, because there's also, you should also factor Oakford, Oakford Court in as well.
Well, that's, that's a quirk going the other direction.
Oakford, Oakford runs right behind the building, so it runs parallel with Penn.
With Olive? Oh, with Penn, yeah.
It runs, it runs parallel with Penn, perpendicular to, to Olive.
Anything on Oakford does not, you know, apply.
So Dan, you're saying we're going to, we either vote with Mr. King or against Mr. King? Is that what you're saying?
In effect.
Okay.
But I don't want you to say for Mr. King or against Mr. King. I'd rather you say, I interpret it to say that it, the sign does face the same side of the same street, or does not face the same side of the same street. Just because historically, we've gotten mixed up in the, the other way.
And Mr. Penatar, do you, do you agree that my reading of the municipal planning code, that where it's subject to interpretation, that is to be interpreted as broadly as I've indicated and in favor of the property owner? Is that a fair recitation?
That's a fair representation.
What was that again? I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
So the planning, the planning code makes clear, and there's plenty of case law, which I'm happy to hand up to you on this, that talks about the property owners to receive the benefit of the doubt, where there's ambiguity or any kind of interpretation that has to take place. So I'll hand this up to you.
So Mr. King, you're saying that it does face the same?
Based on my interpretation of the ordinance, I believe that the signs did not meet the spacing requirement in that section, because they could be both seen from Olive Street.
And, you know, I think that, I don't want to speak for Mr. King, but obviously the difficulty in applying the ordinances is, he obviously has to try to do the best he can, and then obviously you can come here for more clarity, and that's not a knock on Mr. King, but he can only go by what's written.
Mr. Penatar, may I add something?
Sure.
Just for the benefit of the board, when you think from, from the perspective, the ordinance doesn't talk about whether someone is in a vehicle going up Olive Street or going down Olive Street. If you are on Olive Street, depending on the direction in which you're walking, the Lamar board and the proposed Birdhouse board face the same side of the same street. I mean, just consider the chaos that would ensue if ordinances, if ordinances had to be interpreted as a function of the direction in which the observer was traveling. That's clearly the rationale for the language of this particular provision. There's nothing in this particular section that talks about the direction from which the sign is being observed. And as a practical matter, as I said before, you know, what Attorney Barrett says about a broad interpretation of an ordinance is clearly the law. That's why I didn't interrupt him on that point. However, once again, if you adopt the interpretation that he is advancing, you will have no way of stopping two billboards being across the street from each other, or twenty feet from each other on the same side of the street, so long as they're facing in opposite directions. That's a ludicrous result in light of the stated purposes and philosophy of the ordinance. They're both facing the same side of the same street.
Obviously, I know you don't want us to go back and forth all night, but there are rem, first of all, it's pure speculation, right? That there's going to be more billboards, we don't know that. Two, the city council and others can adopt a clearer ordinance, that's their job. Your job is to apply it as it's written. The fact that we're having this debate, I submit to you, establishes that there is ambiguity, that it's not clear to interpretation. And under the municipal planning code, you're bound to follow the law as it's, even if you don't like it, you're obligated to fol, to follow the law. And so, you know, I think under those circumstances, and I don't think, I'm asking you to adopt my interpretation, your first, first question, you have to make a determination, and if you determine that there's an ambiguity in the, in the ordinance, then it has to be interpreted in favor of the applicant. And I just want to make sure that we do get the exhibits that I've marked, or handed up as properly marked. I think I've handed the board two exhibits?
I believe so. Would be the picture?
Yes.
Right? And then the case law?
Was there a second picture?
Yeah, sorry.
So, so we can just have the pictures marked as one and two, and then the, the case law that I handed up as three?
So Dan, you want us, just so we're clear on, on the voting? It does or doesn't face?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion, we vote?
Second.
Mr. Morris?
I do agree they face the same side.
Mr. Walsh?
I do agree it faces the same side.
Mr. Marx?
I agree they face the same side.
Mr. Penatar, could I get clarity on what side or what street it is that the board has determined?
I, I think we presented it to the board.
Well, if, if there is an appeal, obviously the court above is probably gonna wanna know which, which street are we talking about? The same side of?
All right, are we talking about Olive Street or a different street?
Olive.
Olive Street.
All right.
The vote of three to zero, it's been denied.
Thank you. We have an application pending for a variance, uh, asking that you consider a variance in this situation. Um, the number of feet, that is, that issue is less than 100 feet. Uh, we would submit that, well, just over 100 feet would be de minimis. Uh, we have asked for app, uh, variances in the past. In fact, this board granted a variance, I think, just up the street for, um, the homeless shelter on Wyoming Avenue just a couple of months ago. Under that scenario, you'll recall, the property owner was seeking a variance, uh, to use a property, uh, on, uh, Wyoming Avenue for the purposes of, that would not fit in conformity. In this situation, uh, based upon the board's previous decision just moments ago, we're gonna require a variance just of a little more than 100 feet, and, uh, in this circumstance, we would submit that it would seem to be warranted.
Mayor Spardon?
Yes.
This board is well aware with the, with the standards that, that govern variances, and I won't, uh, belabor that point in light of the hour. There is one nuance on this. Now that there has been a determination that this particular use is not a permitted use, the standard that applies, and I'm sure Mr. Penatar, uh, can tell you this, the standard that applies for a dimensional variance, when there's a categorical prohibition against the use, which this board has already voted on just a moment ago, uh, means that there has to be, uh, a showing infinitely greater even than hardship. And you all know, uh, as public servants here representing the zoning board, what the standards are, even for a dimensional variance. And, uh, a, a financial hardship, clearly under all the case law, interpreting the municipality planning code, does not satisfy that requirement. So I submit that on this record in the case law, uh, there's no, uh, basis to, uh, vote in favor of a variance. Thank you.
And just regards to that, I mean, this board has the power to grant variances, that's why you're here. And, uh, you've granted them in the past, and you've granted them in situations where if hardship was not perfectly established, the board recognized that, uh, it made sense to grant, uh, a variance. And so, we're just looking for consistency, and looking for you to apply the same common sense you've used in the past when, uh, granting variances.
You guys understand what we're doing now? Okay. Now, this one's a simple yes or no.
Ready for a motion?
Is there anyone here to give testimony?
I make a motion, we vote?
Second. Mr. Morris?
No.
Mr. Walsh?
No.
Mr. Marx?
No.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Case number five, Elder E. Gomez Monson seeks variance to reestablish two-unit use at 1711 Pittston Avenue, R1A Zone.
Good evening. Attorney Smith, will your client be giving testimony?
Yes.
Okay. You'll swear man first?
Yes, morning.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name an address, please?
My name, Walter Gomez, uh, the address 1711 Pittston Avenue.
Thank you.
I'm Attorney Kevin Smith here on behalf of Walter Gomez and Elder Gomez Monzon. Uh, as you know, we're here, uh, about 1711 Pittston Avenue. It has been a two-unit, uh, for many years, and, um, at some point, uh, within, I'd say, a year or two ago, it, it was condemned. So we're in the situation of, um, a non-conforming use losing its two-use status because of a condemnation. So theoretically, under the zoning ordinance, it would revert back to a, a one-unit, but it has been existing as a two-unit. So we're here tonight to, uh, reestablish its, its two-unit use. Elder Gomez Monzon bought the property this past January, 2020, and, um, just to be clear, it was condemned before he purchased it. It was not a result of, of him purchasing it. He's looking to fix it up and, and reestablish as his two-unit, and that's why we're, we're here today. And I'm sure you know that the, the 1700 block of Pittston Avenue, literally, when you're standing on this property, if you look to the right, there's three consecutive multi-unit properties, and then you have an intersection. If you look to the left, you have another three multi-unit properties, a business, and then a convenient mark. When you look across the street, you have a single-family residence, and then you have a business, a karate school. If you look over to this, the left side, you have a laundromat. So this isn't, you know, a single-family residence where this may be an issue, it's multi-unit family properties and businesses right in the middle of, of where we're requesting the, the unit, uh, the two-use unit. And like I said, it has been a two-use in the past. Uh, we submitted a plan for, uh, just to show the parking, there is a gravel lot in the back that's 40 feet wide and approximately 100 feet long. Uh, Bob Mandola did the plan. He's here tonight, in case you have any questions about the plan or the parking, uh, for our use.
I have a quick question on that. Is the intent to pave the parking lot and signify the parking, or was it to leave it gravel?
It, it- It would be, he would be planning on leaving it gravel unless there was, you know, he would comply with whatever, whatever the zoning office would require.
Okay.
Um, but the intent would be to leave it as gravel. Why don't you come up? So can you just, uh, Mr. Gomez, will you tell the board what you and your brother would like to do to the property if they grant the two-unit use?
Yes.
What would you like to do with the property? What's your plan?
Uh, we're gonna fix it, and then we're gonna live over there, and my brother and me, my whole family.
So you'll use, just to be clear, you're gonna use the two-unit for, uh, you and your brother to live in each unit with your families?
Yes.
Okay. That, that's about it. We'll, we'll take any questions you may have.
Don, was there some, was there a permit issued for this at all, or?
No, I don't believe so. Uh, they were aware, because it had been condemned, that it lost its non-conforming status, so they, they made applications appear before the board before any permits were applied for.
Yes, no work has been done to the property. Um, in, in the, the hopeful anticipation of, Mr. Gomez actually just secured a bond yesterday, um, to, to give to the, uh, the licensing office and start the process if, if this board would be, uh, approving it. Um, but there's been no work done, so there's no permits.
And then, Don, on that note, just to clarify, anything that's condemned to the city has to be brought up to current city code, correct?
Correct. And before the, they'd be issued a new occupancy permit for each unit if they're so allowed.
Okay.
And just to be clear, they're, they're looking to comply with, with, you know, the condemnation requirements. As I said, they're, they're obtaining a bond, and will file the applications and follow the procedure.
Okay. Is there anyone else here to give testimony?
I would just like to add to that, Dan, a requirement to have that paved in the rear, please.
Did you, Mr. Smith, you wanna convey that to your client?
Yes, okay.
And they have to provide for three off-street parking spots for two units, so I would assume the paved area would be enough to accommodate the three, three vehicles, not, not necessarily the whole backyard.
Sure, absolutely.
Correct.
It is a significant ba, it's 40 feet, 500. So, yeah, we will, we will comply and work with zoning to make sure that it does, uh, meet the requirements of the parking, uh, section of the ordinance.
I make a motion?
Second.
With the condition?
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Mr. Marx?
Yes.
The vote of three to zero, it has been approved.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Case number six, Richard Harris Appeals Violation Notice Regarding Use of Property As Construction Company Headquarters in the Parking of Commercial Vehicles in a Residential District at 137 South Grant, R1A Zone, Continued from the February Meeting.
Good evening.
Good evening.
John Williams here on behalf of Mr. Harris.
Okay.
As you'll recall, when we were here last time, and maybe you don't remember, but I'll try to do my best to refresh everybody's recollection, uh, Mr. Harris was cited for having several construction vehicles on his property, which turned out to be so, on South Van Buren, not actually on his property, and belonged to his son, uh, who lives in that property, uh, basically backyards meet. Uh, I did have an opportunity to speak with some of the aggrieved homeowners tonight, uh, specifically, I, I did speak with, uh, George Farrell, and I also spoke on the telephone earlier this week to Kevin Bloom, I think his name is, he was here last time as well. Um, I, I don't know if we have an agreement, what I had proposed and what I believe Mr. Farrell represented he was okay with, would be to give Mr. Harris, who, again, David Harris, Richard Harris, my client, is not, again, his property was not the property that had the, the issue, it was the property behind him, but-
But still, the issue was his property, they're using his property to go in and out.
Well, that, that's also true, there's a driveway on his property. However, he's agreed to remove all of the construction vehicles from, from the property within 30 days. And additionally, uh, he is going to, one of the issues was, and if you'll recall, is that he was taking his daily driving vehicle, and he was moving it down the driveway of early morning when he went to work, and some of the neighbors were complaining, woke them up. He's agreed to park that on the street and on South Van Buren, which is in front of his, his mother's house where he resides, so as not to cause problems for the neighbors. I mean, I, I think that, at the end of the day, that's what this is, is that the, there's issues with the neighbors, there's some friction between them, so we're trying to alleviate that the best we can. So those are the two issues that, that, you know, we effort to resolve that were related to the zoning. I don't know if Mr. Farrell wants to confirm that that's what we talked about, and that's what we agreed to. He's right here, obviously, and I know there are other members of the, of the community here. I did also speak with, I'm sorry, so was it Al?
Horton.
Horton, I spoke with him as well, uh, although I didn't really get an opinion from him, he didn't seem particularly opposed to 30 days. I don't know how he feels about it.
So, so, let me get this straight.
Sure.
You've agreed to remove all of the construction vehicles within 30 days?
David Harris is gonna remove all the construction vehicles that are behind one, uh, I think 132 South Van Buren, is that what it is?
138.
138 South Van Buren. They'll be removed from the premises within 30 days.
Okay, how about the construction vehicles on, uh-
As you recall-
The Grant Street, 137 Grant Street.
As you recall, when we were here last time, I think there's one truck there, and all the neighbors testified that there were not, they didn't have an issue with, with that particular vehicle.
Okay, and that particular truck is the one that's gonna be parked in front of Grant Street now?
The, the one, no, that's, the one that he drives on a day-to-day basis to and from work. It's, it's a regular pickup truck, but it's a diesel pickup truck, it's, it makes a lot of noise, so. Mr. Da, uh, Rick, Rick Harris's truck does not move maybe how many times a year? A dozen?
Yeah, maybe.
Maybe a dozen times a year, so that's not-
So he's gonna move the trailer and everything off the property-
Correct.
-that he pulls out in the morning with?
He, he's, he's gonna, he's going to park in the, in the front, she's not, the trailers aren't even gonna be there. It'll be parked in front on the street, so that when he leaves in the morning, he won't be pulling down the driveway, pulling stuff behind him.
But the trailer will be gone.
Trailer will be gone, correct.
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the city, I would have no objection to giving him 30 days to, to comply and, and remove the vehicles from the property.
I think we'd like to hear from, this is Mr. Bloom that's here tonight, Mr. Farrell, Mr. Farrell, and Mr. Horton.
And Mr. Horton's also here.
And Mr. Horton.
I don't know who the young lady in the back is, I'm sorry.
Peter.
Okay. I don't know if, again, I-
We'll start with testimony then.
George is kind of in charge of the, the whole thing, so, if you want, you come up, George. Did I do it right?
Good evening, George Farrell.
Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name an address, please?
Harvey.
Name an address, please?
George Farrell, 133, 135 South Grant.
Thank you.
It's Granton, VA.
Is what we just heard accurate and agreeable with you, as far as compared to last month?
Yeah, he wanted more time, I said, I said, I can't, I can't put up with it no more. Too old to be putting up with every, all the noises and all this stuff, trucks in and out and stuff.
Do you mean more time than the 30 days?
I told him, I told him I'd agree with 30 days.
Okay.
And, uh, I'd like to have, uh, they, I noticed they put some sign, or marks in for fencing and stuff. Probably now that they get the equipment out there, they don't need the fence, I don't know. But, uh, I'd like to have a, uh, survey or give me an information on the cer, on the thing, 'cause it's real close to my property. I know you're allowed six inches, but, uh-
Yeah, then we wouldn't have anything to do with that here. You can hire a survey or-
Okay.
Yeah, if, if, if they apply for a permit, we'll, we'll make sure that it's, complies with our requirements, and if there's any issues, we'd certainly sit down and try and work them out.
Of course.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple other neighbors back there?
I think we, yeah, we're, it's Peter.
Okay, let, let the record show that the, there are at least two or three other neighbors that have expressed their agreement to the, uh, to the agreement that's been submitted.
Agree to agree?
Consent to agree, I guess.
So we're gonna vote on a 30-day timeline for, for the vehicles to be removed, except for his one personal dump truck? Is that what we're?
Dump truck? Isn't that a, a vehicle?
Well, I, I, isn't that what you're telling me? He's gonna keep his one dump truck there, is that what?
Well, again, when, when, when we were here last, and I don't know if you recall this, the, the other neighbors that came up said, there wasn't, there was no issue with Rick Harris's stuff, it was Dave Harris who had all this stuff in the back, including a small backhoe, his big truck, a couple trailers, all this other stuff that was back there. Uh, again, and that was my understanding, that was the big concern, so speaking with Dave. In fact, I think as we, we sat here, I didn't wanna make the argument, 'cause I wanna resolve the issue, was basically, I think you cited the wrong property, because, uh, you know, he was, he's on Grant, South Grant Street, the, the major issue's on South Van Buren, uh, but in a, you know, trying to work it out so that we don't have to do all that stuff, and try to get the neighbors to get along, I tried to negotiate it so that, you know, the, the prob, the problem issue, which was Dave Harris's vehicles behind the property on South Van Buren, were gonna be removed, so.
The next man was, what, there's one red dump truck that was down closer to the house, I believe? That's the one he's talking about leaving there? I, I mean, if you have a problem, you're more than welcome to come up and talk about it.
Guys, guys.
Yeah, please, please come up.
Please. Excuse me. Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi, Farrell, 133 South-
Good evening. Kyle Farrell, 133 South Grant Avenue, I'm a tenant.
I gotta, I have to go in order. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you are about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Name and address, please.
Kyle Farrell, 133 South Grant Avenue, Scranton, PA 18504.
Thank you.
Guys, the whole issue here is we are zoned R1, it's a residential one. To my knowledge, you need at least a zoning of C1 to have storage of any type of commercial or industrial type of vehicles. The whole issue is the commotion of the traffic and the runoff of the street, which is caused by that. Now, I'm not trying to break either of these guys' backs, they're both good people. The thing is, they're making a couple bucks now, and the only thing we're asking is that they could go and get a lot to store their stuff in. I know it's not convenient, and they can't keep an eye on it all the time, but the facts are the facts. They backed that driveway up without a permit in an effort to try to gain, you know, a little bit of security with their stuff right there and have their depot right there, and it is what it is. But it's become too much of a commotion, and we live in a residential area, you know? I mean, that's, that's just, that's the fact of the matter. It's not about 137, or South Grant, or this or that, it's about the fact that the driveway was backed up illegally, and now they're both using it for transport and for profitable gain. And, I mean, there's no problem with it, but the thing is, is it's in a residential area, so it's not justifiable. That's the whole issue here. That's the whole issue. I don't, I'm not sure what is so confusing.
So, again, you know...
Do you want to grab the microphone?
So, again, you know, I, I'm a little befuddled, because, again, the last time we were here, we discussed this, there was a big issue about all the construction equipment that was located, and it was all located behind South Van Buren, except for his one truck that was located down closer to his house. That vehicle, as I indicated, and as he indicated, moves, you know, maybe a dozen times a year. So it's not in and out every day, it's not in and out every week, it's out, it's in and out maybe every other week if you average it out.
Is that the dump truck we're talking about?
Yeah, that's correct. And the big issue was the constant flow of vehicles from Mr. David Harris's business that he was running, that were coming in and out of there every day, that were, you know, leaving at four in the morning, coming in late at night, pulling trailers behind them, you know, with heavy equipment on them, and there were concerns with regard to that. That was what I was under the impression was the concern from the neighbors. So I approached David, who, again, is not, he's technically not even part of this, because his, all the stuff he has is on, on South Van Buren. And I said, can we work something out? I talked to him, he was agreeable. I talked to Mr. Farrell, who, George Farrell, who seems to be, or had in the past seemed to be the more vociferous, not vociferous, the person who was primarily moving this, it was the most aggrieved person in the neighborhood with regard to this. And I discussed it with him, and he seemed agreeable at that time. So, again, we just asked, we asked for more than 30 days initially, he said all he could handle was 30 days. I said, okay, and I told my client, he said, that's fine, you know, 30 days is enough. So, again, I understand their concerns, but if there's a vehicle behind there, whether it's a construction vehicle or not, I mean, I don't think it's, you know, you could call it a construction vehicle, but I think you're allowed to have one construction vehicle on your premises, even if it's, even if it's in a residential zone.
You're only allowed to have a construction vehicle parked there if it's parked there for eight hours, I think it's eight hours in any 48-hour period. This vehicle's gonna be parked there most of the time.
Correct. All right, so he would have to move it. But, again, that was never raised as a particular concern, and I think you all recall that. The one that was a particular concern was, you know, the young guy, who's David Harris, was driving his truck out early in the morning, he was pulling stuff behind it, he was making a lot of noise, there's a lot of stuff going on up there, it's dragging all the dirt down onto the street. Those were the concerns. So I tried to address those concerns. I did not discuss with, with Rick Harris moving his truck, because, again, at that meeting, I actually heard...
How does Rick Harris get to his property?
How does he get to his property?
On Grand Street.
Yeah, it's right off Grand Street.
Through his property.
So he's passing through Richard Harris's property to get to his...
David Harris, yeah.
David Harris.
Yeah, he's...
David Harris. David Harris is passing through...
Correct.
His father's property to get to his property.
Correct. And that's, again, another reason why, because the neighbors were having a problem with this, we, I sought out a way to get everything out of there as quickly as possible, we asked for 30 days, actually, asked for 90 days, he responded he could only take 30 days, so we took 30 days, we just want to get it out of there. We didn't, I didn't discuss anything with David Harris about the removal of the truck.
Okay, once all that construction material is out of there, and we're now past the 30 days, what vehicles are still gonna go up and down that driveway?
As far as I know, maybe personal vehicles of the...
Personal vehicles?
Well, yeah, like regular, no, not, no, like regular automotive vehicles that ordinary people drive.
But not construction vehicles in and out?
No, no, correct.
Okay, you guys okay with that?
And again, the only...
I'm just trying to make sure that these guys are understanding and are okay with that.
Yeah, no, I'm good. 30 days and clear it out, that's fine.
Yeah, but you're not okay with him leaving the one truck, you're saying?
I don't care about the truck. The truck, like they said, it's very, very, very rarely used, but if we're gonna get into it and it's not C1, then nothing should be stored there, and it could be moved. But that's the least of our worries. If we get everything out and there's no commotion, I'm sure that no one's gonna care about the one red truck that's sitting there.
That seems to be the compromise that's on the table, that the construction vehicles will not be moving on a daily basis, they won't be stored there, a dump truck, even though it doesn't belong in that zone, will be there, and, correct me if I'm wrong, maybe moves once a month? Are we, are we planning that down?
Yeah.
That's not a problem.
Okay, I think it just took a minute to clarify. You can come back up to the podium.
Previously, the truck was there, and he brought trucks in to dump into that truck. So if that's the case, there's still gonna be trucks going into the yard from Grant, where there's no exit to Van Buren. It's only going, and they go in and out backwards, from, every way they can.
But, Dan, is, there is no driveway there, right?
I'm sorry.
There is no driveway there, technically. No, there isn't. They're just driving over the grass, right? I mean, they never applied for a permit for a driveway, right?
No, no, they did not.
So they would have to do that, to park vehicles in the back? Wouldn't they have to do that?
There is a, I don't know if it's modified, or, but there is some type of a driveway there, but no, there was no...
Right, and that's why the water, the rain, when it rains hard, is coming down on the street.
Yes.
All the mud and all that.
Yes. Well, I don't know that for a fact. I mean, I'm not an engineer, I understand what they're saying, they claiming that, and I don't know that for a fact. That's, that's the difference. But here's the thing, we're gonna take all those construction vehicles out of there, there not gonna be any traffic going up and down, so if the problem persists, well, then it wasn't the vehicles, that's, I mean, I guess, well, that's, we'll figure it out. But the vehicle shouldn't be there, we want to get them out, we just asked for 30 days, they seemed agreeable, that's, you know, we're all out with it.
No, I do have another question that I think just got brought up, because in the previous testimony, we were given a lot of pictures, and in them, there was quite a bit of construction materials. Will those be removed from the property, and will that, will they no longer be kept on the property as well? There was water tanks, there was, it was clearly construction materials.
I think if there's any construction materials on the property, it's for the property. That's, that's my understanding. I don't know that for a fact either, that was my understanding, speaking to my client last time, is that he has some plans to put a garage up possibly there, so, you know, he's gathering equipment for that.
Okay, well, I think maybe as part of the agreement, can we look at the idea that the construction vehicles and materials not related to a project there will be removed within 30 days?
Can we do that? Yeah, okay.
Mr. Chairman, what I would ask then, on behalf of the city, is that my, my violation notice be upheld, and I will agree to not take any further enforcement actions for 30 days, and if the property, the trucks are moved and the construction materials are moved, I will withdraw the violation notice.
Any other comments up here? Okay. Do we need to vote on that, Don, or is that just...
Yes, we'll have to vote on that.
Who are we voting on?
I think we're gonna find out.
I'm sorry, I think somebody else wanted to speak.
I'm good.
You're good?
We have to have a process to get in the neighborhood.
Okay. All right, so the agreement on the table is that we will uphold the notice of violation, but Mr. King will not act on the notice of violation for, until after 30 days. And within that 30-day period, the property will be, all construction vehicles and all construction materials not being used at the property will be removed within that 30-day period.
With the exception of a dump truck, that it seems the neighbors are okay with one dump truck being there, 'cause it's not used often.
I make a motion?
Second.
Just so, just so we're clear before we, we're gonna, we're gonna vote to uphold...
We're gonna vote to uphold Mr. King's notice of violation with the stipulation attached.
Okay.
That's yes or no?
Yes. Or uphold.
Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Mr. Walsh?
Uphold.
Yes.
Mr. Marks?
Yes, upheld.
The vote of three to zero, the motion has been upheld.
Good luck.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
And... We are dismissed for this evening.